And you can even put my name down if you want. Uh, the other thing is, on the, um, home maintenance, could you give me a breakdown on how many, are in Wooddale that you do for home maintenance, or do you just the Meals on Wheels?
Shooting from the hip, I think that we do about sixty to seventy-five.
Of a home maintenance?
Of the home, the minor home repair, and then we probably do about twenty-five to thirty, um, chore days.
Okay.
But I will check that and get back to you, uh, or get back, get to you with an accurate number on that.
Okay, so, if I am mistaken, a motion on the floor for five thousand dollars right now, and then send it back to Finance Committee in the next committee meeting for another five thousand, is, is that a motion?
Yeah, we could do that. Yes.
Okay.
Mayor Johnson, is that appropriate? Because you were the one who brought up the issue of appropriateness before.
Uh, that's an appropriate motion.
Okay.
That is appropriate?
Yes, it is good.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Alderman Shockey?
Yes, you said that the, the shortfall was thirty-eight thousand dollars just for the people in Wooddale.
Um, this last year is, is thirty-three. The year before it was thirty-five-six. The year before it was twenty-two. That was the year that we, um, for some reason, we served less meals to your seniors. But also, that was a year we got an additional large amount of money from United Way when they reorged here in the Chicago area. So, it varies. It has never dropped below twenty in the past eight years. And now, it is the last two years, it's up above, um, thirty-five and again, thirty-three-five. So, it, that has a direct relation to the project income or the donations that the seniors actually give us, and that has a relation to the economy and what's going on.
Okay, in our discussion, we're talking about increasing it by five thousand. Perhaps we should, uh, make a motion to discuss the amount and make it more appropriate to what the shortfall is. The other question I have is, is the phone number that the seniors can call if they need the services of the Meals on Wheels or the, say, the cleanup day.
Uh, for the cleanup day, for any of the services, they can call six-three-zero-six-two-zero-zero-eight-zero-four. For the meals, or for additional services or questions in general, they could also call the county senior, uh, Department of Human Services Senior Services Division, and they will refer, refer them back over to us anyway. Or they can call us directly, and we'll get them connected to someone to get them started on the program.
So, to volunteer, they can call this number, and they can call also for the services?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, we'll direct them to the appropriate person.
I know there is a motion on the floor, but I'd, I'd like to, I wonder if we can amend that motion to, uh, open, leave it open to discussion as to how much it should be, because we're only talking about ten thousand when the shortfall last year was twenty-two thousand or whatever.
It was thirty-three.
Thirty-three thousand.
Thirty-three-five. Um, I, I, we will be, you will be entering into your future budget, um, discussions, and we will be submitting a proposal with those costs to you for consideration for your future budget line items. So, we take last year's statistics and give them to you so you can plan for next year. And, uh, sometimes it kind of get, uh, it can get goofed up. We, it's kind of hard to keep track, because our fiscal year is, starts, it correlates with the federal fiscal year. It starts October first, and it ends September thirtieth, where, uh, you have a calendar that kind of crosses those two. But that is, again, why I wanted to talk to you about the general trends and the numbers in Wooddale. So, you, there's no confusion from year to year, just about how much it takes and what the cost gap is on these programs, and for us to provide, uh, services to seniors in Wooddale. So, again, um, the last two years, it's been over thirty, thirty thousand dollars. Last year, it was thirty-three-five. The year before, thirty-five-six. A couple of years before, it was twenty-two-seven, twenty-five. But over the, for as long as you've been giving us money, it's never been less than twenty thousand, twenty-two thousand dollars. So, um, we appreciate partnering with you and your support.
Okay, so it'd probably be better just to leave the motion as it is, and then for the new budget, discuss what it might be.
I-
Where you can make it more appropriate to what is actually being spent.
I have no problem of looking at this at the next committee meeting of giving them a little more money this year. Uh, right now, I, I think, right now, the motion's on the floor is five thousand, and we could put it on the next committee meeting to discuss. Meanwhile, I could talk to the Finance Department and see if we could do that. Could you share that data? Could you make sure we get a copy of your data for we could look at the data?
Yes, Greg does.
And make it, okay.
Yes.
So, I, I think that's the best way. I have no problem putting on my committee meeting, next committee meeting, and, and discuss upping it.
This may sound like a silly question, but who pays the shortfall? The meal still went out, the work got done, and you had a shortfall. Who paid the twenty thousand deficit?
We, we raised it, and over the course of several years, like most non-for-profits, you try to get a little bit in reserves for when you don't have enough to pay, pay the bills. Um, this last-
I guess I'm asking, is it a governmental agency, or was it volunteer money?
No, it's us. It's us. We, we do independent fundraising, um, and do annual appeals. We ask all of the municipalities, of course. We apply for grants. Um, a couple of our grants that we were graced with this past year have been from Sara Lee, from Kraft. Uh, we have a development department that's very active in trying to secure monies for this year and for future years to offset those costs, so we don't have to cut services.
So, there's never been a cut in service because of a shortfall? Shortfalls were always made up by donations-
Yes.
That, uh, you, you had like a special appeal? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, we've, we've done special appeals. We've done everything possible. I have, uh, cut staff and, uh, become computer efficient in anything we can, so that we can not stop from doing a meal a day, at least a meal a day, and a hot delivery and a well-being check. So, it, uh, and, and it's going to get tougher for us. It's going to get tougher for all of us, but, um, it is, uh, the senior population is increasing, and the costs are rising, and we're going to have a few bumpy roads of years ahead of us, I think. I am hoping that, uh, we will not have to cut services.
Please come up to the table and take the mic, sir.
These are wonderful questions, and we really appreciate them, but this is what we're faced with, is the fundraising aspect of this, and I'm so glad you, uh, recognized that.
We normally ask you to identify yourself, but we do know that you are Howard Larson. Would you, Amanda, notate that Howard Larson- Thank you. Mr. Larson.
Are there, are there any other, other questions? If there are, I know you have a whole slate and agenda ahead of you, but if there are, please, um, Greg has got my number. Do not hesitate to call. I'll, I'll leave a few extra cards and, uh, leave data, whatever you'd need. Your, your continued support is, um, vitally needed, and, um, I thank you so much for allowing to speak to you this evening.
Thank you. Thank you, Marilyn Crowley. There's a motion on the floor. All ayes?
Aye.
Aye? Any negatives? Any nays? Then it's approved unanimously from those present. Amanda, I'd like you to please go back on your minutes. I inadvertently said September meeting for the previous one. It should be changed to February twenty-eighth, and I don't think we have any objections to anybody saying that we did approve the February twenty-eighth minutes. Okay? I would like to ask for an adjournment. Uh, all those in favor? Second, first, second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? This, uh, committee meeting is now adjourned.
I'd like to call the Planning, Zoning, and Building Committee of November thirteenth to order. Would the minute taker please call the role, bring it up to date?
Alderman Cadala.
Here.
Alderman Knype.
Here.
Alderman Coles. Alderman Lewitan.
Here.
Alderman Police. Alderman Shockey. Alderman Wesley. Alderman Winger.
Here.
Ask for a motion to approve the meetings of October ninth, two thousand and eight. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Just one item tonight, and that's the report and recommendation on the commercial and recreational, recreational vehicle parking slash storage. If I can just ask a quick question before you start off. The, what we have in front of us, where did that come from? Who put it together?
That was drafted. Uh, I did research into surrounding communities, presented a draft to the zoning board. The zoning board made recommendations and suggestions. We researched additional municipalities based on those, added in, uh, zoning board opinion and commentary, uh, and then had it, uh, reviewed and approved by the city attorney.
Thank you. I think the easiest way to do this would be to go through each section, just name the title of it, and see if there's any questions on each, each one of them. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I just wanted to, um, make a brief statement before we go into the, um, review of this, and just wanted to mention that the Zoning Board of Appeals and staff has worked diligently to, uh, present, uh, a, um, realistic approach to, um, the Commercial and Rec Vehicle Parking Standard Regulations, or Parking and Storage Regulations. And, um, I'll turn it over to Ross, and, uh, he has a brief intro, and, um, we may be able to, well, we can go through this as, uh, you had suggested, but also, uh, we do have, um, the capability of doing a, a short, um, PowerPoint presentation on the types of vehicles that are depicted in here or prohibited, and, uh, if you'd like, we can proceed in whatever fashion you so choose.
Which would you like to do first?
I can just do a, a real quick, brief overview of the ordinance if you'd like. The need for this ordinance came out of the fact that, as we've been receiving complaints and, and trying to resolve issues within the community regarding these types of vehicles, um, we came across the fact that there are actually contradictions in our code. Uh, one section says that the commercial and RV vehicles are prohibited, uh, and then another section regarding home occupation states that a commercial vehicle is allowed, and in that statement, there is no regulation regarding size, type, or, uh, size or type of vehicle. Um, it, that makes it difficult to enforce at best. Uh, we might get a complaint regarding somebody with a commercial or RV vehicle. We go out to try and resolve it, and they point out down the street the six-wheel dump truck that the, uh, home occupation has on their driveway. Uh, what we, we're hoping to do with this regulations is to bring it really into reality as to what is Wooddale. Uh, Wooddale is a community that has numerous working-class people that are required to bring home commercial vehicles with them on a daily basis. Uh, there's also quite a, a few people that own recreational vehicles for their personal enjoyment. Uh, we feel that these regulations treat everyone fairly. Uh, it's, uh, and, uh, regulations that we believe are easy to enforce, and that they are based on, uh, not only vehicle size, uh, vehicle weight through license plating, but they're also based on vehicle size, tape measure measurements. Um, it's, it's pretty hard to argument, argue the fact that your vehicle is oversized, if it's longer than twenty-two feet in this case for a commercial vehicle. It also, uh, I think clearly will help us when we get complaints regarding vehicles, when, uh, it fits within the realm of what's acceptable to the community. Right now, we do get people, it, quite honestly, there, there might be a, a neighbor dispute, and they call us about a commercial vehicle just to, uh, I hate to say get under the skin of their neighbor, but, but to, to exacerbate a situation. This will allow us to, again, treat everyone across the community fairly, equally, and, uh, have even enforcement of the regulations.
So, everybody in Wooddale doesn't get along with everybody else? Okay, you want the PowerPoint next, and then, or you want to go through each?
However you'd like.
Yeah, sure. Alderman Wesley.
How many, how many complaints have you got? I mean, obviously, we gotta have a record on it.
I don't have, I don't have, um, solid numbers, but probably get about thirty, thirty a year.
I mean, it just seems like this is really coming fast-track, and I would think that there would be other issues that need to be addressed before we fast-track this through. I mean, are we dropping the ball on other projects to fast-track this through, or, or, or not? I mean, do these complaints get totally out of control here? I mean, this is first time that this has been brought to us, that the complaints have skyrocketed. I mean, you haven't had complaints in the past several years?
We have had complaints. Uh, we have received, uh, numerous complaints, uh, recently this year. In fact, this was brought before the, the Planning, Zoning, and Building Committee black, back in, uh, I want to get the exact date.
I mean, I'm just wondering why we didn't do it last year, if this was the case, if we were having complaints last year, and all of a sudden, this year, phew, we fast-tracking this thing?
Well, again, we've, we've had an increase in the number of complaints. Uh, there have been, again, these conflict issues within our code. Actually, our code specifies that there are no commercial and RV vehicles permitted right now in town, the way our code read rights, reads right now.
Aren't we doing code rewrites now?
We don't believe that's reality. Uh, as far as fast-tracking, we brought this to the council's attention back in June. Um, at that time, the council gave us direction to take it to the zoning board for review. We've been working at it at the zoning board since then. Uh, we believe that this is an important enough issue and to the community, that it be not buried in part of another review or process that we're doing, such as the zoning code rewrite that's going on. We wanted this to be out there for, uh, everyone's comment and concerns regarding this, to make sure that we have a regulation that is fair, equitable, and everyone knows is, is coming.
So, we get a rebate from Land Vision for doing this ourselves?
This will be incorporated into the Land Vision.
Yes, Alderman Wesley, go ahead. Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Knype?
Yeah, actually, uh, this is an issue that's been kicked around for more than fifteen years. We never really had anything substantial, never had an ordinance. We've attempted it. Uh, things quiet down for a while, it comes back up, and clides down, so we've never had anything substantial to, for any kind of enforcement. Uh, so, and we get it taken care of. Um, it's highly fast-tracking after fifteen years or better. So.
Yeah, this is probably the cleanest one we've seen in those fifteen years, or whatever it's been. So, uh, why don't you go ahead with it, then?
Well, a lot of that, uh, the way that the appearance of this goes is credit to the zoning board and the amount of work that they did put into this regulation. Uh, to start off with, um, we'll start off with Section ten-twenty-three-zero-three, or twenty-seven-zero-three. Uh, this is the section that's necessary to be modified to remove the contradictions in our code. Uh, so what this will do is, uh, establish Section twenty-seven-oh-eight for commercial vehicle and RV recrea, or commercial and recreational vehicle regulations. Moving on to Section ten-twenty-seven-oh-eight, then, we now begin to outline, define what a commercial and RV vehicle is, how long a commercial vehicle that is not parked and stored can be located at a property. Uh, obviously, people are going to have work done on their, their residences, where maybe a vehicle that is larger than what we permit to be stored will be brought there. This, this ordinance also addresses that, and how long those vehicles should be allowed to be permitted at those residences. Uh, these definitions are based on the Illinois Department of Transportation Vehicle Regulations, and, uh, then we, we begin to get into, in Section B, the location of commercial vehicle and recreational vehicle parking.
Any questions on Section A?
With Section A, there's those that are not permitted to be parked?
Uh, this specifies the type, it's basically a definition section, if you will, of the type of commercial vehicle. Uh, if a commercial vehicle is allowed, the number that would be permitted, and also, uh-
Well, I mean, yeah, explain to me.
Explain to me, please. It says, "One, commercial vehicle, any vehicle operated for the transportation of persons or property in the furtherance of any commercial or industrial enterprise, for hire or not for hire, but not including a commuter van, a vehicle used in a ride-sharing agreement."
Correct.
Are you saying that these are not permitted on a driveway?
They are regulated, is what that is saying. The definition of, when we're talking about commercial and vehicle regulations, we're defining what we are saying a commercial vehicle is. So, in this case, a commercial vehicle is any vehicle used in business. It also includes limousines and taxi cabs. It does not include the pace ride-share vans, where you can participate in a program where you get a van, go around, and pick up six other people on your way to work. But it does include limousines, uh, taxi cabs, all commercial vehicles, whether they are home occupation or, um, vehicles that a homeowner is required to bring home as part of their daily job.
But your paragraph above A says the following shall not apply to commercial vehicle conducting business at a location within a residence, within a residential district, provided that no such vehicle shall be parked for more than ten consecutive hours-
Correct.
-under no circumstances shall be parked overnight.
Correct. Uh, an example of this, or what we're trying to address with this, is to say that somebody is having, uh, their, their yard resodded. Uh, the landscaper that does that may bring in a, a bomber load of dirt, or a six-wheel dump truck with the sod on it. We're not saying they can't do that. They can't bring it in to do the work, but those vehicles should not be stored at the residence. They should not be parked there on a regular basis. That's what the intent of this code is, is not to penalize someone who's having work done at their house, but to regulate the day-to-day storage of commercial and recreational vehicles at that residence.
But you're not opposed to them calling the village and asking for, for a permit for one night if they have to leave it because all of the unloading cannot be done?
If that were the case, it would be acceptable to apply, or ask for an administrative relief of it, yes.
Mr. Mayor?
I have a question on the same section, the definition of a commercial vehicle, "Any vehicle operated for transportation of persons or property in furtherance of any commercial enterprise." If you're Shirley the Realtor, no pun intended, and you've got your SUV or Chevy Impala, or whatever, and you're taking an individual to go look at a house, isn't that any vehicle in furtherance of a commercial purpose?
Yeah, the, the way we would interpret this and do that, look at this would be is that if it is a vehicle owned by a business for that purpose-
Well, if you're a Realtor broker-
Again, it, if they have one vehicle at the property that they use for that, that would not be an issue. Also, commercial vehicle, those types of vehicles are generally not licensed or, or, uh, identified in any way, shape, or form as a recre, as a commercial vehicle, so, uh-
So, is that a further qualification in the definition somewhere of what a commercial vehicle is?
No, it is not, but it's, it's basically, it would be kind of a, a, if you will, a judgment call. If there's people that have, have, uh, standard passenger vehicles that are on their driveway, they're not signed, they're not marked, they're not licensed in any way, shape, or form that identifies them as a business vehicle, I don't believe that's outside the realm of regular parking and storage, and I don't believe that that would become an issue.
Well, let's say it does have a sign on it, Remax Realty, or whatever.
They'd be allowed one.
It would be allowed or disallowed?
One vehicle, one vehicle, yes.
Yeah, further on, it does state how many. Any other questions on Part A? We can go on to Part B?
This goes into the location that, uh, vehicles are permitted to be parked in. Uh, in, in essence, the vehicle should be parked in the rear or side, or as, if, if possible. If not, we realize that there are several locations in town where, uh, just because of lot width and, and design of structure on there, that a side yard and, uh, driveway is not possible, so in that case, the front yard storage and parking is permitted. Um, it specifies that the vehicles have to be parked on a hard surface of concrete, asphalt, or paving brick. No, uh, storage on gravel or, uh, dirt or wood chips. Um, it specifies the regulations for side yard, and where, uh, we also do include a regulation that if there's a non-motorized recreational vehicle, such as a boat, uh, that you can store it in your rear yard, you do not have to have a driveway leading all the way to it. That would be an expense and, and also kind of a, uh, an unsightly-ish situation to have for just a boat. We would allow a, a, a vehicle storage pad in the backyard to, to, for the, for the boat, I'm sorry, a recreational vehicle parking pad for the recreational vehicle to be stored on.
Mr. Mayor?
Well, again, the same question. If you're Shirley the Realtor, we used to have a foot doctor in town who had their name on the side of their van. Side yard only and rear yard for that vehicle?
What we're saying with this is that if it's possible to put it in the, in the side and rear, uh, meaning that there is a detached garage already in the back, there's driveway already to the back, that is where the vehicle should be. Um, if, if there's not, we're saying, put it in the front yard, keep it as close to the front of the house as possible.
Alderman Cadala.
In a situation where you can get it in the side yard, but you can't be ten feet or ten percent away from the lot line-
Correct.
-or you can have it in the front, which is going to rule.
Correct, yeah.
Which, which one's going to take press? Which location is more appropriate, and is that outlined in here? Yes, it, it was it, I didn't notice that.
The side yard regulations were put in for the, the pure fact of in a side yard ra, area, your, your driveway that's there is, and most likely going to be in close proximity to your neighbor's living space or bedroom windows. Uh, we didn't feel that it was appropriate for that resident to open up their windows and see the side of a commercial vehicle or large recreational vehicle at that point. In that particular case, if it cannot physically meet the side yard storage requirement, setback requirements and be in, in that side yard, they should not park there, and if it's in, in the rear, if there's a detached garage, it should be in the rear at that point, because there is a driveway already. If there isn't, it would be in the front.
Thank you.
Alderman Wesley.
What, maybe someone could finish my mind, since I haven't had driver's ed for a long time here. Uh, D-plates?
The vehicle weight, uh, it's over, a vehicle that is over twelve thousand pounds, or eight, eight thousand to twelve thousand pounds. Uh, the reason that we set a D-plate is that, and we did not limit it to a B-plate, is that there are actually tax incentives for having larger pickup trucks and SUVs plated as D-plates. The owner of those vehicles get a tax break, even though the vehicle itself will never meet the technical requirements of a D-plate. Um, it's because the vehicle has the capability of hauling and towing certain, uh, weights. Uh, and again, it then falls into, actually, it falls into a farm vehicle category, and the owner of the vehicle does get a tax break for, for doing that. Um, so, we didn't want to penalize somebody for having, eh, for example, a, a pickup truck with the dual axle on the back. They can get that plated as a D-plate. Although that, empty, that vehicle will never come anywhere close to the D-plate regulations. Um, we didn't want to penalize them for that. That's why we left it at a D-plate and did not restrict it down to a B-plate, which is a business.
Okay, we're finished with Section B. Evidently, there were no, no more questions? Did you have a question about Section B?
One more, if I may. How would you apply this to an area like Georgetown? This section?
The location?
Yeah, parking in a common parking lot, safer like a townhome development.
We would, uh, their, their parking areas, or their common areas, there's assigned parking areas with what we would utilize. I don't believe that we would want vehicles in, uh, in the visitor parking or anything along that nature. If it's one vehicle per unit, then that vehicle should be in the assigned unit, the space for that unit.
Anything else on Section B? Okay, then let's go on to Section C about the size. It's okay.
Again, uh, this is where we, we add our, our, if you will, the tape measure measurements that, that make it, uh, we've, we believe make this ordinance truly enforceable and understandable for everyone involved. Uh, the height of a, of a commercial vehicle is seven feet for open-bed trucks when measured to the ground, from the ground to the top of the roof for a pickup truck is what we're talking about, and eight feet for an enclosed van or, uh, small box truck. But again, uh, that eight foot would be the maximum height from the ground to the top of the roof. This would eliminate the large delivery vans and that being stored permanently in residences. Excuse me. The width of the vehicle would be seven feet when measured from the widest points, excluding the mirrors, um, and twenty-two feet in length when measured from the front bumper to the back bumper, excluding snowplow blades when permitted in season.
Any questions about that? Alderman Lewitan.
What, what about people who run a business from their home, like, say landscaping, where they have a gravel backyard, and they have a gar, a garage, and they have a tall unit that they take their equipment for, for landscaping, lawnmowers, et cetera? Are we going to tell people that are here already that, that's it, you, you, you're out of business?
If they're storing these vehicles in- If they're storing these vehicles in-